Welcome to our, our meeting. As always, we start with a prayer, reading or thought and pledge of allegiance. And we look to the audience to see if there's anyone who would like to participate with us in, uh, giving a prayer, reading or thought or pledge of allegiance. So are there any, any volunteers? I see a lot of people in the back row. Does anybody want to come up to the front? You want to come up, Michelle? Okay, come on up, Andrew. Thank you, Michelle. And Andrew.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day. We're thankful for this season in which we could celebrate our independence and freedoms that we have. And pray that thou bless the fine women and men in our military service and our police service who are protecting us and ensuring our freedoms. We're thankful for this opportunity we have to meet here and discuss the needs of the county and local governments. And we're thankful for all that we have and we say so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I know we have on our agenda, consent agenda, item number two is employee of the month, but we're going to jump that right to the front. So Commissioner.
Okay, let me just read this, this recognition. The Utah County Recorder's Office would like to nominate one of our finest for employee of the month. Annie Beaker. Annie hails from California, which explains her sunny disposition. Annie is well-liked by all who cross her path. Her cheery disposition, generosity and empathetic laugh make her a wonderful coworker. Annie was hired in April 2007 as a data technician. Later she became interested and took the cadastral mapping course, giving it her all. She was hired as a mapper for a short time before necessity called her back into her role as lead data entry and quality control analysis. Annie can thrive in any job given her due to her efficiency, organization, patience and dedication. Currently, her job entails that she trains coworkers in data entry. She is thorough and has the ability to communicate clearly as well as listen intently to what is being said. She is well-spoken and has an incredible knack for making you feel important. Annie is also famous for bringing the office yummy treats, just because she gives her all and everything she does. As far as trials go, she and her family have more than their share. She takes each day as it comes and addresses the good and the bad with a positive attitude. She loves her family and enjoys traveling with her husband. She cares for her two children, parents, dogs and cat, and enjoys having extended family get-togethers in her home. Annie knows her stuff and is always willing to answer questions. She provides feedback in a kind way, is a hard worker, very caring and is always cheerful and upbeat. We, the Recorder's Office, are blessed by 12 years of her friendship and service. We are grateful for the ray of sunshine she is in our office. Annie.
You want, you want to say something, Annie?
Um, well, I wouldn't do as well as I do, I guess, if it wasn't for all my coworkers and Jeff and Andrea. They're amazing. They had, they've had my back now for 12 years. Hey, the boy of the month. Oh, my God. This is Haley and Hannah, my daughters. My husband's in DC right now for work, so I guess that's why he's not here. But, um, yeah, I, anything I do that's positive, it's because of my coworkers and Jeff and Andrea. I can't take the credit.
Well, thanks for a job well done. So why don't we, I think we go down there now. Come down here and give you a picture with it.
Thank you.
All these nice words are covered. You guys stay in the picture too.
Wait, wait, one more. You wanted to fish.
Yeah.
All right, best part of the meeting's over with. Now we get to, have to get to the work. We've got a number of items on our consent and regular agenda. And let's go down through them. We already, already did number two on our consent. We'll put everything on consent agenda as to be approved, ratified or agreed to unless we pull it off, um, for discussion purposes. So with that, on consent. If we could, uh, strike number 23, just so we can get some, some minutes on there. Okay. If it'd be okay on number 28, um, that we, let's see. If we ratify version number two, there's two on there. That, is that correct? Okay. Um, if we could table number 41. Any others on the published consent agenda?
Um, I'm looking for the Utah State Extension. I know it found its way on there and we need to strike it.
Um, it is on there.
Twenty-nine, on the consent? Yep. Yeah, so that, that actually is duplicate. We already, it was on last week's.
Okay. So, on consent to strike, number 29. Okay. Going to our regular agenda. We, we've got a number of presentations, if it's all right with the other commissioners. If we could, um, um, listen to number one, probably move number three to number two. And then there was one more presentation, uh, towards the back. Number 33, the presentation, and there were, is it, is all right if we put those as one, two and three?
Yep.
Presentations?
And in terms of other presentations, the, the first work session, we need to strike. They'll not be presenting today, so it's another one.
Okay. Okay, so we'll strike that one. If we can hold, hold number, on, on our regular agenda, number two, but it'll actually be number four. In order. And then number 19 is a duplicate. We need to strike that one. It's the same as number three. We need to hold number 27 to take action. Uh, we need to hold number 32 to take action. Number 33 was moved up. Um, I'm okay with approving or adopting the resolution in 36 if, if, if we're looking at adopting the, the updated resolution.
That's okay. Just the updated one.
Okay. Okay, that should get us, get us through the, anything else? All right. Best part of the meeting's over with. Now we get to, have to get to the work. We've got a number of items on our consent and regular agenda. And let's go down through them. We already, already did number two on our consent. We'll put everything on consent agenda as to be approved, ratified or agreed to unless we pull it off, um, for discussion purposes. So with that, on consent. If we could, uh, strike number 23, just so we can get some, some minutes on there.
Okay.
If it'd be okay on number 28, um, that we, let's see. If we ratify version number two, there's two on there. That, is that correct? Okay. Um, if we could table number 41. That was a request from, Richard, I believe. Any others on the published consent agenda?
Um, I'm looking for the Utah State Extension. I know it found its way on there and we need to strike it.
Um, it is on there.
Twenty-nine, on the consent? Yep. Yeah, so that, that actually is duplicate. We already, it was on last week's.
Okay. So, on consent to strike, number 29. Okay. Going to our regular agenda. We, we've got a number of presentations, if it's all right with the other commissioners. If we could, um, um, listen to number one, probably move number three to number two. And then there was one more presentation, uh, towards the back. Number 33, the presentation, and there were, is it, is all right if we put those as one, two and three?
Yep.
Presentations?
And in terms of other presentations, the, the first work session, we need to strike. They'll not be presenting today, so it's another one.
Okay. Okay, so we'll strike that one. If we can hold, hold number, on, on our regular agenda, number two, but it'll actually be number four. And then number 19 is a duplicate. We need to strike that one. It's the same as number three. We need to hold number 27 to take action. Uh, we need to hold number 32 to take action. Number 33 was moved up. Um, I'm okay with approving or adopting the resolution in 36 if, if, if we're looking at adopting the, the updated resolution.
That's okay. There's, it's the updated one.
Okay. Okay, that should get us, get us through the, anything else? So we'll go to number one. James, come on up. This is a presentation, the audit by Gilbert and Stewart. Um, it's acceptance of the audit by the Utah County Board of Commissioners.
I'm happy to be here today to, to go through the financial statements and, um, and go over the audit which was just completed. Um, if you look in the financial statements that you've got, if we flip over to page, independent audit report, which is four or five pages in there, um, this is our independent audit report on the financial statements of Utah County. The county received an unmodified opinion. That's a, a clean opinion. Um, if you look on, uh, the bottom of the first page, you can see our opinion there is that the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, business type activities, aggregate discrete, the component units of each major fund and the aggregate meaning fund information of Utah County. That's a mouthful, but that's, uh, that's a clean opinion on the financial statements, so the highest opinion that can be received.
You say that again, just so we make sure and get it.
What's that?
I'm just kidding.
So if you flip over to page three, um, this is the management discussion and analysis section. This is, goes to about, from three to 12, I believe. This is a summation of what happened in the county during the year, so, um, I guess it could be considered a executive summary. So you're going to have, um, just highlights, uh, financial highlights, increases in fund balances, decreases in fund balances, um, and then, uh, different information, increases in, um, capital assets, uh, debt information. So it's just a good way to get the quick and dirty, um, look at the county without having to decipher through the whole 130-page document. On page 13 and 14 are the, is a statement of net position, the statement of activities. These are the full accrual basis of accounting financial statements, so these financial statements, um, are designed to put all the assets and all the liabilities of the county into a financial statement format, more like a, um, a, uh, for-profit type entity would present their information. Um, on page 15, this is the balance sheet, uh, governmental funds balance sheet, has the major funds and then a non, a total non-major fund column over on the right. This is the modified accrual basis of accounting, which follows more of the budgetary basis, um, uh, not including all of the capital assets and all of the long-term debt. Um, the reconciliation on page 16 takes that financial statement and reconciles it back to that statement of net position on the front. Lot of good accounting adjustments there. You can see if you wanted to follow through those. Um, on page 17 is a statement of revenues and expenditures, changes in fund balance. Again, this is the modified accrual basis, following your budget-type basis. On page 18 is the reconciliation to reconcile that back to that full accrual. If you look on the bottom of page 17, um, you can see the changes in the, uh, fund balances. Uh, for the general fund, the fund balance went down about $2 million, just, just over $2 million during the year. Um, you can see the transportation projects fund went down by 25 million. Uh, that, of course, is just a factor of what projects are being funded and what projects are being completed during the year, so that'll fluctuate up and down depending on what projects are worked on during, during the year. Following those financial statements are the proprietary fund financial statements, 19, 20 and 21. These are your internal service funds. Um, they're presented as proprietary type funds. They're accounted for on a, um, full accrual type basis like a, a business would be. Those are then converted and put into that statement of net position on the front also included. Um, they're included in that statement also. Behind there, uh, page 22 is the agency funds. These are your auditor trust and the treasurer's trust, um, monies that are basically being held for other entities. Then we get into the meat of the, the notes of the financial statements, starting on page 23 all the way to 63. So 40 pages of detailed information there. Um, accounting policies and procedures, um, are included in those. There's detailed information on the notes, your long-term debt, changes in capital assets, a lot of information on OPEB liability, information on, um, state retirement fund liability, probably 15 pages of that in there. Um, a lot of good detailed information. Behind there are some required supplementary, um, disclosures. And if you want to flip over to page 66, this is the general fund budget actual comparison. If you remember, I just said that the fund balance decreased by $2 million during the year. The original budget was to have the fund balance decrease by $7 million. Um, so, um, tax revenues came in, couple of million dollars higher than were expected and expenditures were, um, significantly lower than, um, what were budgeted and expected originally, um, resulting in just a decrease of $2 million during the year. Behind there, all the way back to page, um, 98 are individual fund financial statements, budget actual comparisons for each individual fund and a combining statement that combines all the non-major funds and carries those forward to the, to the front. Starting on page 101 to essentially the end of the document are statisticals, um, financial statements, statistical sa, tables and data, good 10-year comparison. There's a lot of good information in, actually in these particular pages to go back and look at trends and differences that have happened over the last 10 years. Any questions at all on that? I realize we're going fast.
Always well done.
They, um, the financial statements, of course, um, you have a chance to look at these. Uh, we're still in draft format, so, um, if there's any questions or concerns or differences that need to go over, then we can, we can work on those. We will have an exit conference in a few weeks. We'll be going over the, uh, um, anything you may have, addition, in addition that you have a question on, also, uh, management recommendations that we have. We have some recommendations to give also.
And that will probably give us an opportunity. I mean, I, I know there's usually a line, right? You say everything's, everything's clean to a point, but there's sometimes you see things creeping and that will give us an opportunity to talk about maybe areas where maybe we're getting close.
Right.
Cross the line, if there are any. Hopefully there's not, but that'll give us that opportunity.
That's correct. At ti, at that time, we'll also have the single audit completed. Um, single audit is basically completed. We've got a couple more pieces of information we need to put together, to put that document together. As you, as you may recall, we've got, uh, three other reports. A report on compliance with laws and regulations for the federal government, the state government, and then with major programs, um, for federal government grants. And, uh, that is, uh, basically completed, but not complete enough to, to bring before you today, so we'll have that also. So, again, the, the opinions on those financial, or on those reports are expected to be clean also, so.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thanks for the good work.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I would like to just commend everybody's work. Um, you've got a lot of people that work for you, a lot of good people that work for you, and, uh, we're out and about all over the county. We're bugging everybody and, uh, they're, they do a really good job of getting information for us and, uh, helping us out. Um, particularly the auditor's office, Danine and, and everybody who put this document together is a pretty significant, uh, document with a lot of numbers in it, so.
They know they're great. We look forward to having them back and accessible now that the audit's completed.
There you go. That's good. We'll get out of your hair, so, thank you very much.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thanks, James. Okay. There's, there's an update presentation, the VOKA grant. Jamie.
This is Jamie Barzee. She is the newest victim coordinator that is going to be taking over the grant and therefore giving you the updates a couple times a year. You were used to seeing Lily. Lily quit and went on to greener pasture, so Jamie took her place. Jamie's been with our office for 10-plus years. She's, yeah, so she transferred over to the victim coordinator position, so you'll be hearing from her from now on on the VOKA update. But as for this last VOKA round, uh, we just finished out year two of the two-year grant cycle. That finished in June, so we're starting the new two-year grant cycle, starting July 1st. We redid the grant application and got awarded little over $130,000 for the next two years. Have to make some revisions, of course. I try my hardest every time to get it perfect, but I've never done it yet. So after we make the revision, the award will be officially granted and that should be done probably, well, by the end of this week. So the numbers are still strong. I think we met or exceeded all of our goals for the last year. I'm anticipating the same for the next year and, uh, year two of the grant cycle. Looking forward, even though it's nice to have a third victim coordinator office, still not, I think, where we should be. Should at least have one more victim coordinator in the office, but we'll get to that eventually, I'm sure. And, um, Jamie also speaks Spanish, so she'll be helping with the Spanish-speaking victims in the office, which is a great help for, for us. We do have a lot of people who speak Spanish. If we have people, other people who speak other different languages, we have to hire an interpreter and have them come in and, but Jamie takes care of all the Spanish-speaking for us. That's it. Done and dirty.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, the next, uh, presentation is, uh, word recognition for the NORDA Center for Performing Arts.
My name's Jerry Henley from, uh, UVU. I've been over there for about eight months. I came here to thank you, um, and your counsel, um, the, to, for our NORDA Center. I don't know if you guys have had the opportunity to go over and see it yet. It's a, a great facility for our students and also for the community. And it, we could not have done it without you and many other great, uh, people with their support. We brought, I don't know where this will go, um, but we've got a, a beautiful crystal, um, commemorative, um, piece that you guys can put up someplace in your, um, thing here, but we would love to have you guys come over at any time. And if you haven't had the opportunity, do feel free to get ahold of me, um, and I'd love to have you come over and take a tour of the facility. So thank you again, um, from, from us at UVU, uh, for all that you have done and have continued to do. Any questions?
Thank you.
Will you perform for us, Jerry?
Um, you know, the only thing that I really can do is run and that would be very boring in here.
No, I mean, if we come to the NORDA Center.
I, I would perform, I would find someone to perform for you. No, and, and literally one thing, I don't know how much you guys know about what's in your backyard, but we're the largest school in the state. Um, and, and we do have 38% of our students, our first-generation students, which means that their, their families haven't ever graduated from a, a university. And it really makes a difference what we're doing here. We love, um, the collaboration that we have with BYU as well, um, and it's a very close-knit group, but we are doing a lot of great things over there and we've got 11 master's programs now. Um, but again, we could not do it without the support of you, so thank you. But we would love to have you over, Tanner. Tanner and I are, are neighbors, um, and known each other for a long time. I went to school with his dad, so it kind of ages me a bit too, doesn't it?
Well, I'm sure he'd be glad to perform with you.
He would be probably pretty good. His family is unbelievably talented in every aspect, so.
Probably like a basketball now, this is.
Anyway, thank you. I don't know who would like to take this, but this is a.
Well, show us what it looks like, so we can see. We'll, we'll put it up on our, uh, we've got, we've got places up there in our foyer and so forth to place that. Oh, nice.
There it is. You can see the, the etching inside of the commemorative, uh, building. And we're going to continue to build on that too and, and, um, we, we have a lot of plays over the next, um, six to eight months and would love to have you out to, um, the symphony is actually doing, it's our second home, their second home is in, at UVU. And so for you that have not been to a symphony up in Salt Lake City, because of the travel, feel free to give me a holler and I will get you guys some tickets for that too.
Okay.
I also wanted to comment and, and appreciate you for the work you do, reaching out to the local high schools throughout the state, uh, and how you collaborate with them to bring kids into the program and, and encourage them to develop their talents, starting that young. It's, it's greatly appreciated, the broad spectrum of the work and reach that you guys are doing there.
Thank you very much. You know, we have such a very high, also, um, Latino community population here as well and we, 12% of our students at UV are also from the Latino community. Um, and we're very excited to have them there as well. So we just, you know, we've got so many programs. I noticed a, a few officers sitting in the back. We've got a great, um, you know, program there with that, with aerospace and, I mean, it's, it really is, it's just a fun place to be. I came over from the private equity side to, to do this and my heart is fully vested there and, but again, our, our thanks to what you guys do and we look to collaborate with you over the years, um, as we move forward.
All right, thank you, Jerry. And make, make sure, I know you said largest in the state, but you're actually the largest in the Intermountain West.
Well, thank you. I did not know that, but that is probably true compared to what we, we've got in the Intermountain area.
Yep.
It's fun and, and we will probably hit 60,000 students by the year 2030. So that, we're going to continue to grow and, and provide a lot of great education. But again, the, the offer is open. If any of you have not had the opportunity, do feel free and I'll leave some cards for you as well. Um, give me a call. Um, give me a call and we'll get you guys set up.
Right. Thanks, Jerry. Okay.
Thank you.
There we go.
That's really neat. Thank you.
All right. Okay, presentations are done. We'll now move to, uh, uh, we're looking at, uh, the, the tax actions contained in the recommendation letter. This one we've been working on.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, Paul Jones with the Attorney's Office, Civil Division. We really just have, uh, two parcels. It's the, um, continuation of the, um, Hardman's, Lisa and Paul Hardman, um, application. I'll note that I do believe I see Ms. Hardman here today. Uh, this, this item was discussed at length, uh, I think it was three weeks ago. I know Commissioner Ainge wasn't at that meeting. I'm sure at this point, he's had a chance to review the YouTube. No, oh, okay.
Actually, I did not realize this was on here today. So now we might have to discuss this a little bit more. Okay?
Okay, great. So, um, really at issue here, um, the Hardman property. And I, let me mention also that Diane Garcia is here. She, uh, is our green belt official. That's not her real title, but that's something like that. Um, so if you have questions about green belt, we can, uh, you can, uh, ask Diane Garcia if you, if you'd like. Uh, this, these properties have been on green belt and then they were withdrawn from green belt for lack of production. And, um, at this point, um, the Hardmans have come and asked for, uh, relief from the green belt rollback tax. I will say that there was a, um, there was a parcel split. We may need to bring Diane up here to kind of give us better, uh, details about that, but, um.
Same that was brought before the Board of Adjustments. Board of Equalization.
This came before the Board of Equalization, a couple of months ago. Now it's here. Of course, the Board of Equaliz- yeah. So, um, at this point, I'm happy to answer questions or, or kind of, um, bring Diana.
So with the Board of Equalizations, it was denied, and that's why we have it here under the thirteen forty-seven.
Correct. Yeah, so.
And, and after our last meeting, we talked about trying to find a way to craft something that would allow them, uh, some relief and an opportunity or window to prove production on, on their property.
Right. And I had suggested last time, and I still think it, it might, it might be the commission's best option. Um, at this point, um, see, the county passed a resolution about two years ago now, kind of walking through one, one avenue of when green belt property is withdrawn and kind of the, the action under thirteen forty-seven that the commission is comfortable taking. This doesn't fit that exact mold. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't fit right there. And so it would have to be something that we create. I had suggested that, um, we could, um, agree to a lien on the property that would require the property owners to get in green belt within the next two years and then stay on green belt for the next three. That's an option. I don't know if, if, uh, the commissioners want to think of something else, but I think that it's probably pretty, you know, that's probably pretty close to, to what you could do.
My, my recollection, my understanding is that this is on because essentially I need to vote on this. My recollection of the previous Board of Equalization hearing was that the, the circumstances, um, that led to, to me, the, the lot split was, I have a lot of sympathy for, um, the Hardman family for what happened there. I think that there needs to be something done. Um, I'm happy to do, to provide some sort of relief. The, the, the most concerning thing that was part of that is, and I, I think ultimately the Hardman family said that they were willing, and they can speak to this. I think no matter what, there has, there has to be compliance with the green belt requirements now. And, and I may even, it maybe even makes sense to try to combine parcels to allow that in an, on an aggregate basis, they can achieve the, the green, green belt status. But, um, you know, before, I, I think in that initial application or the Board of Equalization, there was not a, a readiness to say, hey, here's our production. We meet this. And to me, that's, if you're going to appeal, uh, to this body, you need to be prepared to do that. And so while I'm willing to have relief so that this rollback doesn't, doesn't occur, I think that, um, any agreement that we have does need to require that they get into compliance with the green belt. But the current, even if that's not what it was done historically, they have to move their operations to a point, if they want this relief, where it currently complies with green belt, in which case we can give that rollback relief.
So I think, uh, Mr. Hardman's not here today. Um, he's, he's got up and he's, yeah. Um, in my mind, he's been pretty clear that there is no production and has been no recent production on that parcel. And you have to have two years, you gotta be able to come to the county and show two years' worth of production. That's why my suggestion was within two years, get on, so that they, that within two years, get on green belt. So that they have, basically say, look, put some animals on there, grow something, you know, go qualify production-wise. But, but they can't do it for two years. Like they, they can't be accepted into the program until they can show the county that they've been meeting production requirements for two years.
So, um, I'm gonna be voting no on this, and, and I'm gonna kind of state why. Um, I will, I will stand with, 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 uh, with farmers, and I have in the past, even by myself, if, if I really think the farmer's trying to be a farmer. In this case, I think the fact patterns are totally different, though, as I look at it. One, in the way of, um, looking at, in the way of, in the way of the, the, the split of parcels, and that, that, the split of parcels was done by them. It wasn't done by the government. It wasn't, it, that was all on them that was splitting the parcels. Not, not, not the government coming in and making that happen. Second, um, anytime farmers sell all, sell their water and sell their water, and that's on page twenty-eight of our document. When you sell, when you sell your water, um, it's really hard to farm. That's another one. Uh, it was already admitted that there's no production, or has not been production, on, on the property, on that parcel. And even combining, and you can't combine, you have to look at parcels on individual basis. And even combining, combining the one with the one that we're looking at now and the one next door, you still don't have enough production. And so the, another one is that there was a petition to annex into, into Lehigh and, and, and that there was a petition to change from ag to residential. These are all patterns of development, not farming. I know that, that it was thought, well, we've got horses and there's three horses, but the three horses, from what I'm being told, are on another parcel to help qualify that parcel for, and they've been there for a long time. And so, uh, it, it, again, the, the pattern on this thing is not, is not farming. The pattern on this thing seems to be leaning towards development. And, uh, all along, when I look down through this and, and, and work with Diana on, on this, it, it just, it shows that it's going towards development and it's not, it's not a farming, a farming operation. So I, I'll be, I'll be voting, uh, no.
Let me just clarify a couple of things.
Be helpful.
Because I, I did recall some of that fact pattern. There were parts of it that I had recalled differently. The split, I feel like, was initiated by something other than simple, simply them requesting a partition, right? There was some sort of an easement or some sort of action.
A railroad easement.
That called the split. Do you, can you provide direction there?
My memory also was it had something to do with the railroad, but we'd probably need to get Diane or, or Lisa up here to, to provide better detail.
So that was my recollection. Second.
Does the board want to invite somebody up to?
Sure.
To get into that.
Come speak? Or Andrea?
Andrea Allen, Recorder's Office. And I don't have exact, precise detail, but from what I recall, this split happened in twenty fifteen, for the tax year twenty fifteen. There had historically been a, and I don't even know if it was really the railroad right-of-way that went through their original, what they're calling the piece that had been farmed. A surveyor came in for the state, John Stahl, and we redrew and corrected many, many descriptions that had this right-of-way going through it, not just this instance, but there were several as he came through, um, with these affidavits. So the map now matched what was there on the ground with this railroad right-of-way that went through. Um, again, that was in twenty, recorded in twenty fourteen. So there's two pieces, had been in two pieces since twenty fifteen on this particular two parcels that are rolled back. So it was a deeded piece of property. I believe their descriptions read less than accepting. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. Um, Jason is out of the office this week, so I didn't, I didn't get his, um, researches on that. But that's what I recall.
So, so it was a, it was a surveyor update?
Yes, John Stahl.
That caused the split, right?
Yes.
And so the, the farm, the Hardman family, they had been farming this piece the same way forever. Or, you know, regardless of where the production levels were, it had been in green belt and they had kind of maintained the same thing that they had been doing for many, many years. And now there was a split, which required them to go proactively file something. But as we've dealt with in the past, you know, th- they may not have appreciated the need to do that when this split occurred.
There were also other splits that happened prior to this that, um, split up some of those other areas that were initiated by them as well. So, yeah. And, and, you know, the railroad right-of-way out there is, I mean, y- you can see it. They were not, it, it wasn't something that they didn't know where it was, because it's been a definite delineation, physical something that has divided those two pieces, even though it was taxed as one. There was something, you can see it, back to the nineteen fifty-six aerials, and I think you have those in your packets.
But, but what is, what is your, what is, why do you make that point? That you could see it? Because if, if.
Well, because they weren't, it's not like they were farming over on top of that, that they didn't know that there was something there. So the two pieces that they are taxed for follow that physical. So you've got, you had one whole piece with something going down the middle that you didn't farm on, and, and that's okay. You know, ditches you don't farm on. But when that piece was taken and described, it left a piece and a piece, which are still, it looks just the same. They just have two different serial numbers and the piece going through the middle has a third.
To me, that, that matters from a perspective of, um, you can tell where the descriptions are and you can now delineate it. I guess my point, though, on this is, this is something that we deal with. When they did not initiate this split and it was an automatic split, regardless of if they know where the division line is on their property, they may not have an appreciation that prior to that split, it didn't matter, right? They could, they could farm enough on one side to qualify the whole piece. Right? No, they could. Once it was, I'm not.
That, I, that I don't.
By law, you can, if it's one tax parcel. Well, no, but you're, you're saying that it's not enough, but by law.
But by law, they can.
They can, if there is. Or if there is. Yeah. If there is. If there is. There's not.
And again, like I said, um, this happened in twenty fifteen. They started getting two new notices. So fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, they, you know, they, they had two different notices. So it, it's not like it just happened this year and they didn't, you know, they were not aware. So.
You have questions for me?
Yeah, work down, work down through the same, same question.
Okay, so.
And production, talk about production.
When you keep, um, referring Commissioner Ainge, like, um, so they did respond to the application. So some of the other instances that we've had to deal with where we use the resolution is that they didn't respond within the hundred and twenty days to do an application because of a change. And then, um, they still had production, but they were taken off because they didn't meet that time requirement that's in state code.
Yeah.
This is not that instance. So they did, they did respond within the hundred and twenty days, but in that response, they had no agriculture production. So it, it doesn't meet the resolution requirements as the resolution is set out and for the reasons that the resolution was created. So, um, several weeks ago.
Not just on that piece, their entire application. They did not come back and say, hey, on this other piece, can we get credit for production? I, I, I know that's not how the law reads, but.
Well.
Is that what their application included?
They do have another piece that's east of these, that's a separate parcel, that there is hay production. It is the only other piece. If you do, like you say, you combine, but that's not the division. The division didn't happen and divide off that alfalfa field. That alfalfa field was divided off by them. They, they did that. Okay? So, um, so if you combined these two pieces and that alfalfa field and had that acreage and did the calculations for the production, it would not qualify all of that acreage. Currently.
Is that what their application tried to do?
No. No, their application was for those two pieces that I took off due to no agricultural production. I did not take off the alfalfa field because it qualifies on its own.
So those two pieces, you said that they did submit an application within the timeline. And what did that application entail?
So that application, they showed their Schedule F, which is for alfalfa production, and there is no alfalfa production. So then I asked them, you know, I can't use that because that, there's no alfalfa production. And they admitted, and they admitted however many weeks ago, that there has not been production on these two pieces.
Okay. Sure. Please.
My name's Lisa Hardman. The piece of property we're talking about is actually mine. It's in the family trust. The reason Paul's name is not on it is because he's the executor of the family trust, whereas the piece of property is actually mine. Incorrectly, I do not own water shares. I have not sold water shares. So I have no water shares in, in what Commissioner Ivy was saying. The piece of property, I think part of the thing we need to do is define production. It is not crop production-worthy. As, uh, Paul stated last time, it's sand. It's sagebrush. It will barely grow grasses, um, which is why in the past, we've used it as pasture. It is true, we haven't had horses on there the last couple of years because of the drought that we've been in. It hasn't even grown really enough grasses to even withstand horses. So we've had them in a different place. Last fall, we did have a fire, which burned half of our fences. Needless to say, they weren't the best, but they, they did work. So that is the story behind it. The reason the hayfield came up was my fault, because, um, similar to what you're used to, growing up, that hayfield was always part of that parcel. And in my packet, I have shown that that was part of it. So in my brain, I think, okay, that's part of it. So I included the hayfield, which was wrong. I admitted it. I just didn't realize it. So yes, the pasture was a pasture. We had been using the easement property. Just like your easement in your houses, you have easements in your backyards for utilities, but you put grass on them, you use them. We knew the railroad was there. It's been there forever. But we were using it as one piece of property until the county split it, which, you know, they split it. We got two piece, two, um, tax notices. So we just treated it as two tax notices, doing everything the same, until, um, for whatever reason, I don't know what, the, the, the green belt, belt issue came up when they split it. came up when they split it. So that's, that's the story behind it. It is not land production, it is not crop production, it cannot be crop production. It is mine, I'm trying to maintain it, I am committed to redo the fence all around it, to do whatever I need to do to make that green belt worthy and, and pass as green belt. I am committed to do that. Anyway, so that is the truth behind the story. There is no water, and anyway, I don't know if you have other, other questions for me, but basically that's the whole story of it.
Thank you. In the interest of moving this along, I, I would say that I feel like we can, I couldn't support some accommodation. I think that there are more issues here than there have been in the past. To Diane's point, this is not just a procedural issue where a notice slipped. However, because some of the historical, I, I, I can appreciate how someone who owns a piece that was part of a larger farming operation might not have appreciated the needs for their individual parcel once it was split. I'm willing to make an accommodation. I think that it does need to have some real requirements on it, and it does need to say, there's this period of time where you need to, and we just heard Hardman, you know, commit to doing it, and so those commitments need to be met, followed up, followed through on. And if they are, then I think that they can achieve that, that rollback status.
That was where I thought if we required them to come into compliance within the next two years and maintain that for the next seven in proof of production, and if at any time during that time period, the, the property falls out of production or no longer meets the requirements, then it falls back with the rollback tax with fees and penalties to be assessed to make up for the difference as if it had been assessed today. That, that, that was my thought and proposal, is a way to, to try and provide some relief, yet still protect our interests in this, in this situation, in the event that Commissioner Lee is right and they're actually just plotting this for development, that the county doesn't actually lose back on, on, on our interest in, in, in the tax that would be due today.
So we'd be looking at proof of production in the next two years? And so when, when would that happen? I mean, would it be on a, we'd have to wait after two years and then look back and say, was it, was it in production for two years, starting, you know, today forward?
Starting today forward.
Starting today forward, you have to show production?
Yeah, that's how, that's how I basically-
And given this type of land, you're going to be able to, to find some livestock at this point in the season to put on there to graze. And put up an electric fence and, and throw the sheep out there, whatever it may be.
Then after the two years?
And so it would, it would start for this and, and then for two years, you know, that's your two year, two-year kickoff period. And I think it keeps within the spirit of this law, right? Because it's the intent of this law, is to provide those opportunities for relief. And then we provide that opportunity for them, and if we're very specific, that over the course of the seven-year period, if it falls out of production or goes into development, the fees assessed and associated with it coming back into rollback accommodate for any loss that we would have incurred during the time window.
So would that, would that include-
Of not acting today.
Would that include the rollbacks, five-year rollback from this point, five-year rollback, and it would, it would capture the whole thing? Or we only doing a five-year rollback from seven years out and then five years back? What I mean by that is, maybe I'll clarify that. Because state code says we can rollback five years, but in this case, we're given a major exception to it, and the major exception, if we go, if we go three years from now, if we only go five years back, we're not capturing the five, you know, the five years from this point going backwards. So we're saying that we're going to, we're going to take the whole, the whole issue, the whole five years from, five years back from now, and it's all in, and if they roll, if they're not in production in, in four years from now, then we're talking nine-year rollback?
It would be a five-year rollback, but I'm saying the way we, my, and this is part of a question, can we legally assess fees associated with that to capture the additional two years? Or the years associated with it? This is a conversation piece. I'm just, you know, putting out an idea proposal and I'm trying to say can we-
I could, I could go with it if we capture the whole thing.
Can we, can we do that? And can we assess those fees in such a manner that it's captured? Again, I'm, I'm trying to make sure that we give them the opportunity for relief and that, that they prove that it is in production while protecting our interests. And from my understanding, the way we can do that is we can assess a five-year rollback at whatever point in time they fall out of production, and can there be a fee, a fee or-
For the other, for the remaining two.
Right, for the remaining two, or whatever that timeframe might be, tagged as staff or whatever it might be, right? From the county standard, can we adopt that fee with this particular agreement that would capture that money? That, and the exact timeframe on that or the exact dollar amount, I don't have in detail, that's the broad umbrella look at this.
Commissioner Ivy, the reason I like, I think you have a great compromise here is that, you know, the greenback, or the green belt requirement does not, you know, prohibit someone from selling their property, you know, typically, right? And so, but in, in this case, by, by putting some, some more teeth in this agreement, what it really is doing is, you know, if, if someone says, I'm, you know, I might sell it, in, in that case, if that's what they're thinking, I'm, we might develop, but we might farm it, they may hesitate to move forward with this agreement. Whereas if they truly want to farm, this is a no-brainer for them to accept and get the relief. And so I, I, I think that's a good strategy.
If we, if we take the whole thing, yeah.
If we take the whole thing, and that's, what I'm saying is I believe them. I believe they've historically farmed this with this intent. I believe that their intent moving forward is to continue to farm it, and I trust that they're going to, I'm going to act in good faith that they're going to do that. But if they fail to do that, then I'm saying, okay, there's going to be a penalty associated with that that's all encompassing, whether that's you decide to sell it or you fail to meet your farming requirement.
I could, I could go with that, because I think then the burden's back on there and there's no loss. I mean, what we're not doing-
There's no loss, there's no loss to us.
We're not moving, we're not moving the five years forward, which is, you know, which is, which is problematic. We-
Agreed.
Take the whole thing, and we call it a penalty or interest or whatever the case. If they decide to develop it in four years, like I said, four years, then we're talking nine, five-year rollback plus the penalties that would associate technically the rollback of the rest of the other five. So you'd have, you'd have it all in, all in one.
Okay, so what, what you could probably do is, there would technically be two different rollbacks, right? You'd have this current rollback, which we're going, which sounds like you may be willing to defer. Now, do you want to defer it for a total of seven years? Like, two to get in and then five to stay in? Or are you saying two to get in and then seven from there?
I, I, the seven is coming from, from the two and, the two and five.
Two and five.
Let, let me ask you this. Are we going to be able to get to a place where we make a motion on this?
Yeah.
Or do we, right, on this format? Or do we need to say, let's get this drafted and move?
Yeah. I would suggest you let us try to put this together, now that you've given that direction and those kind of parameters, so we can try to come up with something that addresses it that way and then stick it back on the agenda.
And that's, and I'm fine with it, but I think you have, Paul, while we're on this agenda item, do you have additional questions for us about what the intent and what we're after here?
I do have one question. Sounds like, sounds like Commissioner Ivy, you were saying to assess a penalty and interest, and Commissioner Lee's talking about capturing the entire rollback amount for those years.
So, so my saying is-
So the two of you on the same page on that?
The penalty and interest would, would equal-
Same dollar amount.
Same dollar amount.
Yeah, the penalty and interest would equal the same dollar amount.
Or you could do it the same way you said, and that was the five-year rollback now is deferred and, until the conditions are met. If they're not met, then, then that's captured as well.
Then they would owe the rollback that they're going to incur, plus this deferral amount will become due. And so it would be, it would, so it would be the same.
It'd be the same.
It'd be the same.
How I picture doing it.
It's, it's the same either way, right? I think we're arriving at the same outcome there. And, and we're, again, we're protecting the county's interests, but we're acting in good faith to the applicant who's said they're going to meet these standards.
I will draft something and I'll work with the Hardmans between now and next time it comes on your agenda.
So that was the only one that was needed to be discussed of the two, right? The other ones approved? So the motion would be to approve item number two, except for the Hardman parcel being continued?
There's only the Hardman.
Only the Hardmans are on there.
We'll just need to continue.
If you just continue the whole item or?
So move the, continue item number two for one week?
Second.
Continue for, can we, can we-
You may want to just continue it for-
Without date, is that all right?
Continue without date, we'll, we'll put her back on when we get ready.
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second to continue item number two without date. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. Thank you, Paul. Okay, number 27. This one we need to take action on to refer to Utah County Planning Commission proposal, the land use ordinance tax amendment to Chapter Two and Chapter Three. I know this was, I think there's multiple of us that are interested in this one going forward. Is there any discussion to this one?
Nope.
A motion would be in order then?
I move that we refer Agenda Item Number 27 to the Planning Commission as stated. Second.
Got a motion and a second to, to take action to refer to the Planning Commission as stated, number 27. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes three zero. Thank you. Okay, number 32 is to adopt or deny an ordinance to amend the Utah County Land Use Ordinance, Chapter Six, related to the requirements for large-scale developments. And I assume that Brandon or Bryce was going to speak to this one?
I don't see either of them here.
Rob, do you want to speak to this one, or do you want us to continue this, or?
If Brandon was here, I'd probably continue it, but that's the next week.
You think he's coming back, or do you think he just stepped out? I hate to-
I don't know. We can pass it for a minute.
We, can we just, we'll just hold it? Hold, move to the next one, we'll come back to it. Okay. Oh, well.
Next thing we have is our work session item.
That's, yeah, okay, well, let's, let's set our closed meetings in. We need, we need Items Number 37, 38, and 40 are the ones that, that I've been told is there. Any need for 39 that I haven't?
Not one more.
Okay. So we need to strike?
Strike 39.
36 and 39?
Strike, no, 30, just strike 39.
Just 39? Okay, move that we strike item number 39?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to strike Agenda Item Number 39. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. We can set the other two and then we'll go back.
Move that we-
The other three, I guess.
Set, approve Items Number 37, 38, and 40 by setting date, time, and location for closed meetings for each of those items, today's date at this location immediately following this meeting?
Second.
Got a motion and a, and a second to approve, set a date, time, location as stated, Number 37, 38, and 40. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. Okay, Brandon, welcome back. We're now on item number 30, yeah, which number was it?
Thirty-two.
Large-scale development.
Brandon Larson, Community Development Staff. So as staff goes through and reviews these, what we call large-scale development applications, which is kind of an interesting term we probably need to look at a little bit, but large-scale developments includes everything from one lot subdivision upward, and so as we look at these applications, we, we find requirements that, that sometimes cause a little problem and may, we want to take a look at and see if it makes sense to update or amend. And so staff went through the, through Chapter Six recently and, and looked at a few things. The, the biggest thing we looked at was relative to, to the water requirements. Water requirements, there's, there's a number of them. Of course, most of our developments are, most of our developments feature, or the, the water source for our developments are typically wells. You know, we don't do a lot of developments with, with homes being, or lots being attached to water, or wells, or lots rather. And so as we, as we, as we looked at these, these water requirements, they're, they're kind of spread out throughout, throughout the various sections. And again, with Chapter Six, there are six different sections. The first section kind of is, it sets up kind of the process for how applications get approved, and then the next five sections set up the requirements for the, the various development types in, in the county. The most common that you see is Section 6.3 Plant Subdivisions. So again, those, those water rights or water requirements are kind of spread, spread out through, throughout those various sections. And so biggest thing I wanted to do with this, in this proposal, was try to bring all the water requirements and put them in one location. Currently have a requirement for the, for an engineer, the applicant's engineer, to basically demonstrate or, or certify that the requirements, the water requirements are met.
So Brandon, can I?
Yeah.
So I think that's an important point that, you know, because we've changed it so that it's not just all relying on us, you know, to stamp that, that the applicant's engineer, their professional license on this thing as they're working down through it is tied to it as well.
Yeah.
And I think that's, that's a, for me, that's a key point as I was looking down through here on this. But it does say the county engineer shall determine whether the engineering meets the applicable standards of this section.
Right.
So we still have a double tie into that as well. So how, how is that going to function? If, if one engineer, let's say that there's, I mean, engineers never disagree, do they, Richard? I mean, but let's just say that there's a, there's discrepancy between engineers on, on this, where for whatever reason, one engineer says, I think it should be like this, the other engineer says, no, it's fine the way it is. How do, how do we work through that?
So it should just be the applicant's engineer who, who provides the document demonstrating that the water requirements are met, and then it's supposed to be reviewed by, by the county engineer. And the county engineer is, is the, and the, the person or, or his designee who would, who would verify that the requirements have been met, that, that they have demonstrated that the requirements in the land use ordinance have been met. So there aren't two engineers or two engineers hired by the applicant to, to provide, you know, two different opinions on how the, on whether the requirements are met. It's just one engineer and then our own county engineer or his designee who's, who's verifying that the requirements have been met.
So I'm going to, I'll, I'll just read what it says here. It says the county engine, this is under F. It says the county engineer shall determine whether the engineering report meets the applicable standards of this section.
Correct.
And, and so if, if the, if the applicant engineer, is that language sufficient, is what I'm asking? Is that sufficient? Because it says shall meet the requirements, and what if the engineers, you know, the county engineer says it doesn't meet the requirements and the applicant engineer says it does? I mean, I, I'm just trying to balance that, the words.
Yeah, if, if the applicants, if, if the county engineer determines that the report, if he determines that it doesn't meet the applicable standards, the applicant's engineer would have to go back to the drawing board and, and further demonstrate how it does meet the requirements.
And, and that's not the only way. The other way would be, they could file a board of adjustment for an alleged error. They could argue that the county engineer is incorrect. The county engineer in this situation, I, I believe is also our zoning-
True.
Oh, you are? But, but nonetheless, you're interpreting the land use ordinance. And if they're interpreting the land use ordinance, they could file a claim of, claim of error, and then they could appeal that to the board of adjustment. So, so they have, they have the ability. But ultimately, we need to have someone who has some expertise to review the expertise, and that's, that's our county engineer. That's, that's how it's done throughout, you know, all planning departments, is to have somebody review to make sure that, that what's presented is proper, meets our own ordinances. And that's why this is here. But again, they have two options. One is to comply with Richard Nelson or whose designee says it doesn't meet the requirements and here's why, and, and then they can fix that, or they can say, oh, you're wrong, and they have the ability to appeal that. So they have options. Okay. I just wanted to, since we went, worked through that whole issue of allowing them to hire, you know, their home, their own experts in that area, I know that in sitting through some of those meetings, there's a lot of different opinions on what this actually means, and they'll argue like crazy on, you know, is this, does this base work? Are we far, are we deep enough? All, all those- All, all those kind of issues. And so I'm just, so technically what we're saying is, is that our, our engineer has, has the ability to say, you know, rejected, and then it has to go.
Yeah, I, I think what, what we're saying is that, look, our engineer's only certifying they meet the requirements of our ordinance. As far as the depth of the, the ground, and the, you know, rock, or whatever, all that kinda stuff, I don't know that he's gonna get into that. What he's gonna focus on is, does the engineering report provided by the applicant meet the requirements of the Utah County Land Use Ordinance? That's really what he's focusing on. I don't know that he's gonna get into a, a fight over, over some of, of the information contained within the engineering report unless that engineering report does not satisfy the requirements of our ordinance. So it's deficient, for example, and it does not satisfy the requirements of our ordinance.
But we, we have had those.
We have had some of those. Most of the time, they, they just fix it and send it back. I don't know that we've had any that have filed a claim of error on that issue, because usually they realize, "Oh yeah, we probably should've done that to me." But you're right, there are some that don't like, that they may not agree with what the staff have looked at, and, and they can raise those issues as well. And often do, as you know.
For me, this is, this is a large enough legislative change with enough happening in the code. I would like another week to review this carefully.
Fair enough.
I move that we continue. Item number?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, for one week?
Second.
I got a motion and a second to continue item number thirty-two for one week. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That passes three-zero. Yeah, it's a lot, a lot in there. Okay, let's see, number one, we struck number one. Number two is discuss requirement deadlines and expenditure, uh, uh, the, uh, number for the recommendation, the Good Governance Advisory Board. This, this morning, there was a petition filed to collect, intent to collect signatures. So I'm not sure, sure how, if we wanna continue with this discussion or not.
Well, I want to.
Okay.
I mean, so I'm, I'm sitting here just thinking about the last six months. Commissioner Ivy, I know, has a much longer window timeframe than that, that he's been working on this. But for the last six months, we had, you know, some great volunteers from our community working on studying this issue and making recommendations. Over the past two weeks, we've had our clerk-auditors department working around the clock and our attorney's office working around the clock. And they have this optional plan that was ready, seems like it's in pretty good form, to go forward and, and move forward with. The districts that the clerk-auditors department, you know, they stood up last year, two, or two weeks ago in our last work session and said, "We can get this done. We can get this done even in the accelerated timeline, even if the county attorney requires to take his full 35-day review." And so, that's what we're, we're moving towards. And I'm kinda dumbfounded that, that there's this petition that is being filed. The timing is, is pretty obvious, but I don't know, Commissioner Lee, I just was notified via text in the last thirty minutes or so that, about this petition, and that, that you are one of the petitioners. So maybe you can take a minute to explain what's happening.
Yeah, this process has been very frustrating to watch and to, and to go through. And, and frankly, as I've, as I've looked at it, and as far as I know, not one single petition, or one single signature was turned in. It doesn't look like there was enough general public support for, for that, that form of government. And, and so there's a number of people throughout the county who have contacted me and asked me to do something about it. And I said, "Well, we can't. We can't until it goes through a process." That process ended yesterday. And so, I was willing, along with others, with former commissioner, current mayor, member of the Good Governance Board, and, and also an advocate in the, in the county, you know, to put our names on a, on a petition and say, "We wanna at least have the same courtesy to look at something different." That something different will be an extended five-member commission and, and see if we can garner the support from, from the citizens to, to put it on the ballot in 2020.
So you, you feel that the, the work and the recommendation of the Good Governance Advisory Board was ill-founded?
No, I, I, I read down through what, what they had to say. There was, obviously, I had some, some concerns about what, what came, came forward. From their own admission, the work wasn't complete. And, you know, they came to a conclusion without going through all the parameters. And so, I, I've looked at it, I've, I've read their, their, their conclusions, and, and I think there's more discussion that needs to be had.
Okay, so, so again, essentially, you, you feel like they didn't do their job?
Oh, well, did they finish? I think in their, from their own, from their own admission, they said that, you know, "We actually recommend that you do more work," that it wasn't finished.
And, and so you feel like that the work we're doing now collaboratively, collaboratively as an elected body, through these work sessions with our attorney's division and with our clerk-auditors division, is not what we're elected to do?
Commissioner, it's one of the, it's one of the processes, and you were one of the signers of the last one.
Correct.
In which, in which, you know, I put on for a work session to talk about this issue. And then, I would like the same courtesy, you know, that, that I gave when you were the last one to sign on that last signature, you know, as, as a sponsor.
A petition that was filed before the work session.
Yeah. So I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to have the same, you know, the same, the same courtesy of going through the, through the process, you know, that, that I afforded to you.
I guess I don't see how you haven't.
Well, I mean, going forward.
Yeah, I mean, Commissioner Lee, I, I do draw a distinction because this time around, we, we just spent a lot of time and resources getting to, right? And, and you, you supported the, the Good Governance Advisory Board in forming it. And we had that dialogue throughout, throughout their, their deliberations and when they delivered their final report. So, to me, I, I do draw a distinction between when Commissioner Ivy was one of the signers of the petition, there wasn't really anything happening in the county at that point in time to deliberate on this issue. And he kind of spearheaded that issue and the other signers of that petition at that time. I wasn't comfortable, I know you weren't comfortable as well. And so, then he stepped back and, and supported the formation of the Good Governance Advisory Board so that we could continue collaborating. This, and, and maybe I'll just ask as well, the timing of this does not feel like a genuine petition. I have real questions about whether this is a good-faith petition. Because it was immediately filed today, because we were about to act to place the ordinance from the Good Governance Advisory Board on. And clearly, the petition signers know that this blocks the commission from acting. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, you know, and again, going through this process and looking at the whole thing, I am, I'm, I'm, I'm not pleased with what I was seeing when I got the report. And I stayed out of the report and I looked at what was going on. I could see, I could see that there was, you know, there was a lot of, a, a lot of agendas attached to it. And so, in, in looking at what I thought was a, a, a better option, along with many others, we looked at the timing and said, "Well, we can't do anything until after the eighth, obviously." As soon as we have an opportunity to do something, let's, let's, let's act. And so we did. We, we acted in a way that, uh, we're gonna, we'll get the signatures. I, I feel very confident that we will get the signatures and it will be on the ballot. And there'll be, you know, a, a number of people who like to, like to then vote on, on this issue.
What agendas did you feel were attached to the Good Governance Advisory Board's recommendations?
Governance Advisory Board? I, I think they were trying to, they were trying to work through an issue. You know, even, even from some of the members of the Good Governance Advisory Board who I, who I spoke with, they, they, they felt like there was a, a real need for rush, which was completely disheartening to a certain extent. You know, this, in, in essence, to, to slow this down a little bit, it's gonna save the county hundreds of thousands of dollars to slow this process down. I mean, just to start with. And, and this, this, this rush feeling of, of pushing this through, you know, without, I mean, they, they mentioned there was maybe a hundred people that showed up at their different meetings here and there, from what they said. I don't, I didn't do account. It seemed like there was a small group that was, that was driving this conversation and not, not a, a broader conversation. So, I think that we have an opportunity to have a broader conversation.
But I don't understand what agendas. You, you specifically said there were agendas attached to that. What agendas were attached, from your perspective?
Well, there was, there was, there was agendas, or there was, there was hearsay of others that were prepping and planning to run for certain positions because it needed to be on this year so that they could, they could prepare and prep for next year. That was talked about wildly, so, I mean, those, those are the type that was just kinda wonderments.
So, so people trying to decide to run for an office in a potential future form of government's an agenda?
If you're trying to change it so that you can do it, it becomes an agenda.
And what if you're just simp, people, I, I guess I don't understand that line of thinking, but I, I tend to think people look at, you know, what are the options out there and make decisions based on those, but...
Do we have legal counsel ready to, I, I have some questions about this process? You know, I, I think context, there's, there's technical ways of answering this, asking this question, and then there's kind of, just kind of a more straightforward way, which is that we have a recommendation, we have two commissioners ready to move forward. Everyone knows that this has been marching forward to get a vote on an ordinance. And today, that process was obstructed by a group that wanted to file this, clearly with their timeline to, to block this. Do we have any argument to, to say that that's obstruction? And to say that there's, that we should still be able to vote as we have kind of been planning on?
Right. Um, there is a requirement in the, in the, the code that would prevent voters from initiating the process in bad faith. And, so when you talk about obstruction, that would be the only maybe avenue, I think, that the argument could be made is that it's, is, is, is that the process was initiated in bad faith? Would be maybe your only argument? Now, the code is not clear about how bad faith is defined or further, or further, who's going to make that determination. So we would probably need to look into that, you know, a little bit more to find out, you know, who would make the call about bad faith. It would be difficult, you'd have to, you know, probably need some facts to establish. I mean, you mentioned timing. To you, smells fishy, or, you know, doesn't look quite right. I don't know if that would be enough to establish bad faith, but certainly, if you're gonna talk about an obstructionist effort, that would be your only avenue, I think, is to. And we would need to really look into it to figure out the procedures for that.
And do we feel like the petition group has the ability to draw their petition?
No, David Levitt, I can't remember if he was on the phone that week or if he stood before you and walked you through seventeen fifty-two A three oh one. Seventeen fifty-two A three oh one is the sec, is the section that talks about the procedures for initiating the adoption of an optional plan. And a new procedure can only begin if the first process concludes with an election or if a petitioner group fails to get enough signatures before the deadline. And so the deadline has to pass before you can figure out if there's enough signatures. There is a discussion of withdrawing a petition, but that withdrawal can, can only happen after those signatures are certified. So...
Well, I, I think that there was some debate on this point of law, which is, I mean, I, I think I recall members of the clerk-auditors department saying, "Look, if a petition group, you know, were to come forward and sign an affidavit that says, 'You know what? We changed our mind. We're not really gonna gather any signatures. We, we have no intention of moving forward with this. You know, we decided that we wanna support the county process and the Good Governance Advisory Board,'" and that, that there would be, that, that would be sufficient to say, "You know what? There's nothing in place there anymore."
Well, there, there may be two trains of thought there. One, you know, can the clerk accept some sort of a withdrawal? And, and that would probably be up to the clerk, you know, to say, "Okay, you've, you've signaled an intent that you're not gonna gather signatures. We're not gonna, we're not gonna monitor you. We're not gonna follow up with you." But when you get into legally being allowed to, to initiate a procedure, I, I don't see the withdrawal as an option to open it up to, to anybody else.
That's ironic. I mean, so the clerk auditor could accept a withdrawal?
I mean, they could accept it...
But you're saying your department is not going to allow a vote? Even though that person never files signatures, they're not submitting anything, you're still gonna wait that six-month period before you would allow someone else to file a petition or the commissioners to pass an ordinance?
Uh, yes, that's right. Again, I mean, if clerk auditor accepts a withdrawal, it's really sort of, I don't know, there's a lot of meaning to that. You know, because then the next day, you could come back and say, "Actually, we decide that we don't wanna withdraw." And the, and the clerk auditor would likely say, "Okay, well, you still have five months left to get, to get signatures, so go ahead," right? I mean, there's not a real, it's not spelled out to accept a withdrawal.
They could relinquish that right in the signed statement. And of course, hypothetically, I'm, I'm, in this scenario, I'm, I'm assuming that Commissioner Lee would seriously consider doing this.
Right. Well, again, even if, even if they did, you know, would that preclude other people from going out and gathering signatures on that same petition? Right? So, you may have other people out there gathering. And again, just looking back at section three oh one, it provides all the criteria for when, when somebody can, can initiate the action. And that, that avenue is not accounted for.
Well, I, I think we need to seriously consider this, 'cause there's part of me that believes that Commissioner Lee was really trying to do the right thing here, and he's really just trying to be a holding spot for the vote of the commission to move this forward. And so, that, you know, he's trying, trying to protect for some other rogue group, trying to undermine the, the work of the committee. And so, by just having this placeholder here for a short period of time, it might preserve our ability to continue deliberating on this, and then they can withdraw the petition and we can vote and move forward.
Um, an answer to that would actually probably put me in bad, in bad faith standing. And so, no, we plan on giving the signatures and putting this on the ballot.
Yeah, I know that David Levitt spoke at length about the withdrawal option and walking us through the statute, and I, I don't think that avenue exists.
So Paul, basically, on, on your end of it, you've completed a fairly good draft, right?
Well, that may be up for debate, I don't know, but...
Right, but, but...
I did submit to the, to the commission yesterday.
From my, from my perspective, you've worked very diligently and put together a very good draft. And I, I first and foremost wanna commend you for that.
Thank you.
And, and thank you. You know, a lot of times, government employees get thrown under the bus and, and beat up a bunch. And, and I'm thankful for, for people like you who, when given a task, go to work on that. a task, go to work on that task. And also the clerk auditors office, they, they, in a time fashion much faster than anticipated, went to work and enacted in good faith and in putting some maps together. As Commissioner Ange alluded to, I originally signed a petition to jumpstart a conversation. When I saw that there was a better process to move forward, a process with the Good Governance Advisory Board and working through this as a legislative body, I was happy to step back from that and, and allow this, this process to go forward with the Good Governance Advisory Board to support that. And, and was appreciative of the hard work and effort of those individuals that was put in. I was grateful to be able to attend one of the meetings, particularly the one down at Nebo School District, and, and listen to the, to the feedback from the elected officials and the public at that meeting, to, to look at the work of those individuals garnering the information, to look at academia, go through and a process of trying to discover a better way of governing and put that expertise into, into form. And then to make a solid recommendation on a broad spectrum, 30,000-foot level, on a better form of government for Utah County. And it's a form of government I believe in. And I was grateful to have some time and opportunity to sit down and work with you and your office on crafting legislation that's reflective of that better form of government. Because I believe in the power of a representative government and our ability to modify, to, you know, edit, to, to expand, to amend these particular petition, these types of forms that we're not allowed to in a petition. So I was really grateful for that process. I was a little disappointed that this petition apparently is something vastly different than, than what was even recommended and something, you know, that, that wasn't part of that amendment discussion. And, and so I, I'm disappointed there. But I want to express my gratitude for, for the process of governing.
Yeah, this is, this is great. We've done great work. I, I still am going to keep these very close. The work session doesn't seem productive at this point. But we've got it ready to go. And should, to me, this does not feel like a serious petition. This feels like a filibuster. And so to the extent that plays out and there's an opportunity to still vote on this and move forward, then I'm prepared to do so.
Me as well.
So thank you for all your work.
And, and appreciative of the money that we've already invested in this process.
Okay. Public comments. Seeing none, we'll move into our closed meeting. Thank you. Oh, one public comment, come on up.
I just wanted to make a comment about the petition as well, that I feel like, yes, my name is Julie Fulmer and I live in Vineyard, Utah. I just wanted to say that I feel like there's been a really good process. There's been a lot of things collected. There's been a whole work group that's gone into determining the form of government that would be well done in the county. And I think a petition on both sides really speaks to the voice of the people and needing to determine, hearing that from the voice of the people and seeing it on the ballot and moving forward in that direction. So just wanted to thank you for your comments. I appreciate them.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Andrew Jackson, I'm a resident of Orem. I wasn't at the COG meeting. I don't know if any of you were at the COG meeting. I think you were, Commissioner Lee. I don't know how many mayors were there, but I know that they took a vote on supporting the recommendation from the Good Governance Board, I believe. You abstained from the vote. Mayor Wes Moreland and Mayor Miller voted no. Do you know how many other people were at the COG meeting?
There's a lot of mayors there. I mean, I don't know how many.
Yeah. So in addition to that, as we talk about the referendum form of government, you have the chief elected officials of the various cities within Utah County, except two that voted in favor to support that good governance recommendation. So I just wanted to make that as a point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? All right. Seeing none, we'll move into our closed meetings.